Welcome to the Cupertino City Council's special meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 21st. If you could, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Fruin.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. There is no closed session item to report and no ceremonial items, so we'll go to the action calendar, which is number one, Consider the Memorial Park Specific Plan Conceptual Design. And may I have the staff presentation, please?
Yes, Mayor Way, we have a staff presentation prepared by Public Works staff and also Gates' consultant. I'll turn it over to Public Works Director Chad Mosley.
Good evening, council members. Chad Mosley, interim Director of Public Works. I have with me Susan Michael, who's the Capital Improvement Program Manager, and she'll kick off the start of the presentation.
Thank you and good evening, council and members of the public. Thanks for coming tonight. Tonight, oh, can we have the presentation on the... There we go. Thank you. Go to the next slide. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to present our findings from our community input on the Memorial Park Specific Plan project and facilitate confirmation of the preferred draft concept plans, design direction. So we'll first do introductions about the project. We'll go over the community input and the alternatives that were presented early on. We'll then jump to the preferred draft concept that came from those, that input, and we'll then go to comments and questions, and we'll also mention next steps. So tonight, the team from the city includes Director Mosley, myself, and Rochelle Sander from, as the Director of Parks and Rec. We've all been involved with the project. And I'm going to turn it over to the Gates team. They're virtual and they're going to continue on the presentation and introduce themselves.
Great. Thank you very much, Susan, and everyone at Community Hall tonight. We appreciate the time. I'm Michael Freytek with Gates &amp; Associates. And with me tonight is Rebecca Flanagan, our Outreach Coordinator. A little about Gates. We have over forty years of experience in park design and placemaking where we love engaging with the community and really strive to stay reality-based, ensuring that the vision that's decided by the community in the city can be implemented. The reason for this project is that the specific plan will provide guidelines and recommendations for the future of Memorial Park that aims to improve the site to meet the future needs of the community. These guidelines were established within the Parks and Rec Master Plan and aiming to expand the civic event and community gathering spaces as well as enhancing the natural site while keeping the Memorial Park's unique identity and sense of place. The Parks and Rec Master Plan established numerous key themes for all the parks within Cupertino. And specifically within Memorial Park, the focus was to keep it as a community hub, a multi-use space, and a civic-focused space, as well as other highly-valued recreational opportunities. This plan, with that information, we developed a vision to revitalize Memorial Park by engaging the public, getting their input, and establish this park as a community gathering space, multi-use civic-focus space, and keeping these, enhancing the natural landscape that we see today. Some background of where we are and how we got here. We first developed an existing conditions report, reviewing the site, understanding what's going on. And we came to the community with numerous questions and alternatives, design alternatives, which Rebecca will touch upon. And tonight, we're here to present the preferred draft alternative. And as we move forward, when we refine this concept plan, we'll end up coming to the schematic plan, coming back to the Commissions and Council with these recommendations and guidelines for the future of Memorial Park. And with that, I'll pass that on to Rebecca to talk about some of the outreach we've done to date.
Thanks, Michael. So we went out to the community with our initial engagement efforts about finding out what is important to the community regarding Memorial Park, what they like, don't like, or what they would like to see in the space in the future. We had excellent engagement, over 2,300 responses via a variety of in-person and virtual engagement opportunities. Next slide. The questions were based, as I said, around what they like. Park identity, natural site, civic event space, and community gathering space were the three identity options which were derived from the Master Plan for the city of Cupertino. And we asked about features that the community would like to see at the park in the future. Nature was a very top priority, something currently liked a lot at the park and would like to see in the identity. The community was also very desiring bike connectivity, nature play, and a variety of recreational experiences, diverse recreational experiences for all ages. Three alternative concepts were created to highlight the different aspects of Memorial Park in that identity scenario, a community-focused concept, a nature-focused concept, and a civic-focused concept. Next slide. And we took those concepts out to the community for round two. We engaged in virtual and in-person efforts, and a thousand-plus responses were collected. We offered opportunity for feedback about each design. What do you like about the design? What do you not like about the design? And how we can make the overall best design? And then which design overall does the community prefer? And the results of those efforts showed us that Concept A, which was the community-focused concept, which was highly based on diverse recreation and active community engagement experiences, was the most preferred. It featured a large multi-age play area and a combination of other nature and civic event-focused spaces. Next slide. We asked about the favorite features for each concept, and play was also a very important feature for Memorial Park. A play feature was in the top three for each concept, as was the nature element. Again, a passive garden walk was featured in all three concepts, and that also finished in the top three. And pickleball was definitely important to the community. We heard about in both rounds. We also asked for the least favorite elements of each concept, and these were the aspects of the concepts that received the most votes for least favorite concept on the plans.
Great. Thank you very much, Rebecca. And with all that information, we were able to develop a singular concept. And as we saw, Concept A was the most preferred concept. That became the base. But seeing that some other amenities within the other concepts were also highly requested, this ended up being a blend of all three options. And so as we look at the site plan and go through it, this is understanding spatially how these components all work together, the use compatibility, the size, and the location. So as we go through the site plan, we'll start on the bottom by the senior center and travel all the way up to the middle of the park and eventually to the Quinlan building. So number one here, we have a large event lawn. This was furthering the Parks and System Master Plan as well as the community input of providing and enhancing the event space. For example, cherry blossom is held here. They like to be close to Stevens Creek Boulevard for high visibility. That provides that space for those, for those users. Additionally, to support the events, not only for the lawn but the amphitheater, we've added additional parking and a drop-off zone. This will help facilitate all of the event logistics, potentially provide food trucks during those events, and allow access to bring other amenities to the amphitheater itself. You'll see on number four there, we've expanded the senior center deck, understanding that that demographic is growing, knowing that the development next door is incorporating that demographic as well. So being able to have this expand into the park for one cohesive space for all user groups. Continuing north, you'll see that we have a restroom in its current location, but upgrading that, enhancing that to serve this new space. Number six as well, the nature playground was a highly-requested item, preferred item within Concept B. That was able to nestle just right next to the event lawn to provide an additional source of high-value play for the community. You'll notice overall that the plan establishes a hierarchy of pathways, multi-use pathways. That was also requested by the community, providing walking paths throughout the park. So as we follow this large curve, you'll notice there's a couple amenities along that path. The Veterans Memorial will remain in place as well as the amphitheater. That will also remain in its current location. However, the amphitheater will receive infrastructure updates, additional shade, and overall ADA accessibility upgrades. Continuing along that path is the passive garden walk, a, obviously what we saw earlier, one of the most highly-preferred amenities through all the alternative concepts. This space introduces multi-use path network, picnic areas within a potential native garden. And you'll see that kind of throughout the park where we are reducing the amount of lawn and incorporating these natural vegetation areas. Continuing north along this curved pathway, we come to this large multi-use play area. This was a key element within Concept A, which was the preferred concept. And number 12 highlights the relocated and expanded play area for two to five and five to 12. This is a large area, excuse me, larger than the combined two existing play areas. We also have the pickleball courts, which was a top-five amenity requested, as well as other high-value recreational amenities, the basketball court and the fenced off-leash dog area. This area provides high-value recreation for all ages, all abilities that can happen simultaneously. Additionally, to accommodate those, this new active space, we're providing an additional shaded, reservable picnic area, shown on number 18 there, as well as the other side, keeping that in its current location and enhancing that area to support these spaces. Continuing north, you'll notice the tennis courts will remain in its current location. And moving towards Quinlan, the event lawn will remain in its current location, providing additional seating and pathways along the edges to support festivals and the programmed Quinlan uses here with the city. And it also supports festivals like Diwali. And ending at the Quinlan courtyard, this will receive upgrades to enhance seating, shade, and overall accessibility. Looking at some enlargement areas, we kind of talked about some of these elements already, but you'll notice that we want to ensure that all users can come to this park, so enhancing the connectivity from the outside into the inside. So you'll notice on number 12 here on the north, we're expanding pedestrian usage and access to this park on the north side here, as well as the east side and the south side. And last enlargement slide, this is focusing on the multi-age play area. You'll see here some of those picnic areas, conceptually shown, as well as a highly-desired educational garden zone, shown on number eight here. A new restroom will be incorporated. That was requested by the community. And this acts as, it serves for all this active use here, but also acts as a wayfinding element, landmark, so all users have an identity to enter the park for security and safety purposes. And with that, that concludes the concept presentation. So we're here today presenting this. And as we continue to refine the overall concept plan, this will enter an environmental review, and we'll eventually come back with the guidelines and recommendations to Commissions and Council. And before I end the presentation, I will hand it off to Chad for the concluding statement.
Thank you, Michael, and Gates team for the presentation. I appreciate all the hard work that you've done to date on behalf of the residents, especially the community outreach and analysis of their input. Council members, we'd like to reiterate that the project is funded through the end of the specific plan. Project, it will include environmental clearance. We'll also be working to develop a phasing plan to, you know, help guide strategic implementation of the project through this, of the schematic plan. And the design and construction of the projects proposed in this plan are not yet funded or scheduled. This is, we're strictly scheduled through the end of the schematic plan. And with that, I want to hand it over to the council if you have any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to really thank the staff. We have actually been in council and going with the staff over the Memorial Park plan. So we've asked questions. So the staff have offered the council members sessions to go over the plan before the meeting so that we have a lot of answers to questions. But I'm opening up for our council members if you have further more questions to ask staff. If not, I would open for public comment. And Madam City Clerk, how many do we have?
Yes, Mayor, I have two speaker cards, or sorry, 14 speaker cards for people requesting to speak from Community Hall. And I see five hands raised on Zoom. 14 speaker cards, approximately 42 minutes, and then about six, another 36 minutes on Zoom. So we're looking at about 78 minutes, which is not a long time.
So I think we've allocated 45 to an hour for this time?
Yeah, so I think we allocated approximately 90 minutes for this agenda item. I mean, it might go a bit longer, but that was the time that was allocated on the timed agenda.
So, but that 90 minutes include everything, so the public comment?
Correct.
Okay, so I like to limit the public comment to two minutes instead of three so that everyone can speak up. So I would like to start public comment right now. Madam City Clerk, thank you.
Okay.
So two minutes, please.
Okay, so two minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak on the side, and please have your hand raised on Zoom in the next nine minutes or submit a request to speak card in the next nine minutes. Our first three speakers are Larry Kubo, Ron Ruth, and Shawnee Kleinhaus.
Please come up.
Where do we speak?
Right there, in the middle.
Right here?
Yes.
Yes, podium microphone. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Larry Kubo. I'm actually a San Jose resident, but I have Cupertino friends with benefits. And so as a result, I've been able to, I've had the pleasure actually of playing on the Memorial Park ball field. Because you have a much better ball field than many parks in San Jose, I even chose to pay for senior center parking, even though I didn't need it, because it was my way of paying back for the privilege of playing on such a nice field. Truth be told, and I'm not sure you guys really realize this, but you really, your baseball field is a real gem. And if you demolish it, given, it's going to be hard to replace, given the price of real estate and the cost of construction in the South Bay. So let me share a quick personal perspective. As a member of Vintage Softball Club, a senior softball organization for 14 years, I waited years for San Jose to build a nice ballpark. It was funded in 2000 under a $228 million bond. The last thing they did with the bond was to build Arcadia Ballpark in East San Jose. It wasn't completed until 2019, almost 20 years later. Am I up, timed up? The budget for the, for the complex, which is a 14-and-a-half-acre four-field complex, was $18.8 million. The developer eventually contributed all 14-and-a-half acres, mostly because it was in the shadow of the Reed Hillview Airport. And so I don't know what the final budget cost was to San Jose.
Thank you.
But you can do the math.
Thank you.
It's going to be tough to build a...
You're muted. Thank you. Next speaker is Ron Ruth, followed by Shawnee Kleinhaus, followed by Chris O'Reilly. Welcome, Ron.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'm 86 years old. I live in West Santa Clara. And I've, again, met all the San, the Cupertino ball players through the vintage. And we cover all of Santa Clara County. So anybody even here is encouraged to come and play with us. I have lived up and down the state of California in all my 86 years. Since I got out of the Marine Corps in 1958, I've had jobs and I moved up and down. You guys have one of the finest parks I've ever seen. When we have our family reunions, we all get together, we all like to eat a lot, then we all wind up at the ball field. That's something you should consider, I think, when you say you're going to take out a ballpark. At a park like you have, which is incredibly beautiful, and I know you've, and the other things I want to tell you is, I've never seen a better-maintained ballpark. You guys maintain this park exceptionally well, including the ball field. You have built-in seating. You don't have little aluminum stands. You have built-in, in-the-shade seating for people to watch. I think it's just a marvelous place, and it would just hurt me incredibly to see you take that away. I know you want to do a lot of things for all your citizenry, and that's admirable, and that's what you should do. But please don't take away that ballpark. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we have Shawnee Kleinhaus, followed by Chris O'Reilly, followed by Nico Avliss. Ables.
Good evening, Mayor May and council members. I'm Shawnee Kleinhaus. I'm the environmental advocate for Santa Clara Valley Odebon Society. We're located at McClellan Ranch, and I have been with our organization, involved with park-related issues in Cupertino for many, many years. Annie will give you a presentation later, and we had a handout that we were hoping you'll receive with hers, but maybe it would be better to provide it now. We believe that the park could and should support biodiversity and integrate nature the way that the community is asking. That nature was the first, the most important thing to the community when the Parks Master Plan has been created. And then all along, every time something related to parks come to your attention, people ask for nature. And so related to this plan, we're not trying to say build this and don't build that, but we're saying anything you do, bring nature in, in every little aspect that you're working on in this park. So how do you do that? And Annie will show you later some pictures from some of the Google campus areas where they have brought in nature. And they have monarch butterflies and endangered species flying everywhere. And it used to be in North Bay Shore, and now it's in Cupertino, in Sunnyvale, I'm sorry. So we asked for the non-turf areas, areas that have landscaping, to please plant a variety of plants that have high habitat value, bloom in succession, so there's flowers all year round, 80% Californian natives from this area, and plant at least three patches of milkweed for the monarch butterflies. That will give you a great identity for, because they'll be there and people will enjoy them. And to work with ecology groups like ours on how to develop best practices for maintenance, so the maintenance crews actually help the biodiversity thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Riley, followed by Nico Avliss, followed by Harlan Jackson.
Please no clapping. Thank you.
Welcome, Chris.
Hello, council members. My name is Chris O'Reilly. I am vice president at LGCS, the home of the magic travel softball teams. We are one of the largest community-run youth softball organizations in Santa Clara County and the largest and only girls' softball organization in Cupertino. There are over 200 female athletes in our league, ranging in ages from five to 14. Our athletes learn how to be good teammates and learn how to set goals, all while getting exercise, improving self-esteem and confidence, and having fun. Almost all of the girls in our league are from Los Gatos, Cupertino, or Saratoga, as the name LGCS implies. Mona Vista Park in Cupertino is one of our three home-field locations. This week alone, our league has used and paid for the use of Mona Vista Park for 12 hours. With our enrollment continuing to increase year over year, we expect summer usage in 2024 to be closer to 20 hours per week. And we would use your facilities even more if they were cost-competitive with neighboring communities, easier to book and easier to maintain. We do not routinely use a softball field at Memorial Park, but know of many softball organizations that do. Speaking as an LGCS representative, my concern is that by eliminating Memorial Park softball facility, you will put greater stress on the only remaining softball facility in Cupertino at Mona Vista Park. In addition, I note that in a city that has 17 soccer fields, six baseball fields, and just three existing softball fields, you are considering eliminating the one sport that is dominated by girls. If the Memorial Park softball field must be eliminated for the sake of broad development, I would like to request your help to ensure that our community girls don't lose out. What other athletic facilities are underutilized, and can we transition at least one of those to support softball? We live in one of the most affluent areas in the world and pride ourselves in opportunity equity. I hope we can be sure that we extend that to girls' athletics as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, we have a sort of rule, not, no clapping, please. Thank you, because we like to open up to everyone. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your collaboration.
Next, we have Nico Avliss.
Hello. Hello, Mayor, council members. My name's Nico Avliss, full name Nicholas Avliss. I'm the current president of LGCS, parent of two players in the league that I run. Today, I'm accompanied by my oldest daughter, Ally Avliss, president of our sister organization, CGSL, Cupertino Girls Fastpitch Softball League, Lucy Hong, and Chris, who you just heard from. Again, our league is 200 players, girls that range from five to 14. Removing Memorial Park is detrimental to our girls and the sport of softball. Decisions like this have led to recent downfall in the sport of softball, namely the 2024 Paris Olympic Games, where softball is no longer a sport. Dwindling, you know, feeding players from our league into local Cupertino high schools as well. LGCS feeds several of these high schools and middle school softball programs, which would immediately be impacted by the field removal. Annually, we sponsor high school players with college scholarships. Playable fields, well, removing or reducing playable fields will not help us continue to grow the awareness of the sport and give back to the high school community. Lastly, and most importantly, please do not take away from girls' sports. Please pursue a plan to keep this field and fix the reservation system to help with the low utilization. These girls need you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nico. Next, we have Harlan Jackson, followed by Ronnie Tay, followed by John Lung. Welcome, Harlan.
Thank you. My name is Harlan Jackson. I sent the following email to each of the city council members. I have the good fortune of being a happy Cupertino resident for 60 years. I've seen good ideas proposed for our city over the years and been vocal in my support. Today, I'm being vocal about what I see as a bad idea. The proposal to remove the softball field at Memorial is a great field, well-designed, complete with lighting, lighting that because of sequel rules and other reasons would be cost-prohibitive to be installed today. In other words, irreplaceable. I understand the city's desire to have a world-class city park, which showcases Cupertino as the great city that it is. I also understand that once consultants get involved, they must justify their contributions with a go-big-or-go-home mindset. But look at their proposals with a more critical eye, and some changes look like a glorified version of musical chairs with amenities we already have. Moving the amphitheater, really? Perfectly situated in the park today, designed with a nice berm, nice acoustics. My wife Barbara and I just enjoyed listening to Cupertino's own symphonic band with a couple friends last Thursday. Your recent improvements to the park are great. We watched a pickup game of volleyball being played on the new lawn somewhat beyond the stage, which causes to think, if it ain't broke, why fix it? I had heard that a reason being given by the city for proposing its removal is that it's underutilized, which prompts me to ask, whose fault is that? It's well-designed and maintained with recently-installed protective fencing along the third baseline? Absolutely suitable for use. Is the city promoting it in any way? And how do you define use? Aside from myriad of softball games over the years, I've seen our residents enjoy running around in it, seen balls being kicked and thrown, seen both balls and frisbees being caught by both people and dogs. Please don't take the lack of the field support by consultant survey at face value. Fewer than 2% of Cupertino residents even took round two of that survey, which shows
Thank you. That is your time?
That it?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have Ronnie Tay, followed by John Lung, followed by William Bonin.
Hi, my name is... Hi, my name is Ronnie Tay. I am a longtime and active member of the Cupertino community. I have been member of the Cupertino Sports Center since 1997 for tennis, and I've been playing softball at Memorial Park since 2016. The city believes that the field is underutilized at 15%, as measured by permit use in 2022, a pandemic year when California was still under a state of emergency. It would be better to look at the pre-pandemic number, but regardless, it is very misleading to compare the utilization of a softball field where 20-plus people may use it in an hour with other amenities which may have one or two people for that same hour and don't require a permit. There are now more than 200 men and women that use the softball field every week across the 16 teams in the city-run leagues, plus more who use it outside the leagues. Altogether, I would say there are more than 300 people who use the softball field at Memorial Park every week. That is more than the use of most other amenities in the park. That is more than the use of most other amenities in the park. I have submitted a petition that has garnered more than 720 signatures in just a few days. Most of us didn't know that the city was considering replacing the field until recently. The Memorial Park softball field is one of the few in the area built for softball. The softball field can be modified for youth baseball by adjusting the use bases and using an artificial mound. A baseball field can't be modified for softball. Instead of removing the softball field, we should increase its use by promoting the league more or by opening up to other youth sports leagues. Memorial Park is a beautiful park. It is a gem and a unique asset to Cupertino. It is the only softball field in the area with lights. If taken away at considerable expense, it will be very difficult, if not impossible, to get it back at any price. I urge the city council and the city to please support the active, healthy and outdoor lifestyle that hundreds of men and women use the softball field for, and please support girls and women by showing your support for their sport. Please require that the softball field is included in any redesign concept for Memorial Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Next we have John Leong, followed by William Bonin, followed by Alicia Hacker.
Hello, I'm John Leong. I'm one of the officers in the Finnish softball club of Santa Clara, of which many Cupertino residents also played in. I'm personally responsible as commissioner of the fund league, which consists of about 50 to 60 men and women, average age over 70. We have a couple in the 90s, which means that most of us are retired and that means fixed income. If you want more utilization, we could provide that. Right now, we are playing mostly in San Jose fields, mainly because they force a special discount as seniors and no one else uses it during the daytime when we use it anyway. So if you were to reduce the rate, make the reservation easier, we could certainly supply the need for it. And pre-COVID, I happened to look up some statistics and it turns out that among seniors in the United States, the most popular athletic sports is senior softball. So I think it's really important for us seniors to have this field. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next we have William Bonin, followed by Alicia Hacker, followed by Louis Howling. How?
Thanks. I'm Bill Bonin. I'm a 20-year resident of Cupertino and I've been involved in Cupertino senior softball since 2015. I have Parkinson's disease, which is a condition that's normally associated with Muhammad Ali, Robin Williams and Michael J. Fox. It inhibits my ability to throw the ball faster, hit the ball hard, but I have a heck of a good time playing softball here in Cupertino and I would hate to lose this field. It would deprive me of a source of recreation which is fun for me to do, which is relatively cost-free, given that the stadium is built and has the enthusiastic support of my primary care physician and my neurologist. I would strongly suggest that we not take the field down. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Next we have Alicia Hacker, followed by Lucy Hong, followed by Mahesh Pahala. Welcome, Alicia.
Hi, my name's Alicia. Really quickly, I'll try and get through this. I work at Apple, though I need to note I'm not speaking on their behalf. While I live in San Jose, I work at Apple, which does reside in Cupertino. In fact, Apple has a very large presence in Cupertino and has done so much for the city. While our individual players do not call Cupertino a home, we call it our work home and in most cases, we spend more hours of our weeks in Cupertino than we do in our own hometowns. So it sounds like we actually do live here, even if it's not official. My colleagues, teammates and I have regular softball leagues and have played in Memorial Park for many years. In fact, it was through softball at Memorial Park in 2017 that I was able to begin regular bonds with each of my teams throughout my career. Our leagues have grown to more and more with each season and each year. Prior to the pandemic, we had numerous teams playing on multiple nights, though lately since the pandemic, it's been tough getting any help from and working with the city of Cupertino employees. Memorial Park is the only field with lights for night games and evenings, evening games, which are our only options for us in our league due to the work conflicts that we have during the day. It's our way to get some exercise, enjoy our teams and colleagues and camaraderie and to connect with the community that we work in. Our additional presence in Cupertino for the games brings additional business and revenue to the businesses in Cupertino. If you want arguments against removing the softball field, I can give you a laundry list of reasons against removing it and solutions for your quote "underutilization" issues that you claim, but it would be nice to actually get some help so that we could contradict that. However, if you have time to cover these in our, however, I will not have time to cover these in our shortened time slots. In short, considering the number of locations and all of the proposed options noted to add to the park, you have numerous of each of these options available throughout all of Cupertino and the neighboring cities, including items that are already available in Memorial Park. There's 25 tennis courts within a two-block radius of the park alone. You have no idea how much this parks means to each of us who use it. It has a special meaning and place in our hearts. Please do not take away the softball field and in turn softball itself from those of us that love and enjoy it still in this city.
Thank you, Alicia. Next we have Lucy Hong, followed by Mahesh Pahala, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Lucy.
Hi, my name is Lucy Hong and I'm the president of the Cupertino Girls Youth Softball League and also executive vice president of the Cupertino Fremont-Sunnyvale Council PTA. So first of all, thank you to the city council and staff and gates for a very thorough review on the Memorial Park specific plan. I recognize that park and event space in Cupertino is very limited and that it's important to incorporate the preferences of the community into the new park design. So as the most popular design removes the softball field, I do want to bring attention to the fact that removing a softball field from Cupertino negatively impacts both youth and adult softball leagues in the city. Cupertino Girls Softball and its partner organization, Los Gatos Cupertino-Saratoga Girls Softball League, is one of a few dedicated girls' community sports teams. The organization is made up entirely of parent volunteers hoping to instill the love of softball while developing team sportsmanship, healthy bodies and minds, and an appreciation for physical activities in the outdoors. There are over 200 girls that play in the league and we rely heavily on the two fields at Mona Vista Park. So Cupertino Union School District is also one of the few districts that offers a softball team as part of its sports teams at all five of the middle schools. Unfortunately, only two of the five schools have proper softball fields, so the softball teams just practice on the grassy fields. Neighboring Sunnyvale and Los Elto School Districts all invest in softball fields and they have them on their school campuses. Although the recommended plan for Memorial Park sounds wonderful to a Cupertino resident like myself, I'm also very worried that the removal of the softball field will take away a much-needed resource enjoyed by so many youth in the community. I request that city council, in partnership with Parks and Rec, acknowledge that Cupertino does not have enough softball fields to support this growing sport, so that consideration be given to either preserve Memorial Park softball field or identify other park locations where girls can have access to this amazing sport.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
Next we have Mahesh Pahala, followed by Luis Sedadi, followed by Mike Stanek.
Hello, good afternoon to the city council members and the staff for putting up such a great plan on the memorial park. My name is Mahesh Pahala. I'm the co-founder of the Cupertino-Bhuvneshwar Sister City. I stand here not to, just to give a soft reminder about the discussion or rather when the former mayor, Savita Vedyanathan, had visited Bhuvneshwar along with me and Rena. She had visited Ekamra Park, that is one of the nature's parks, which has a lot of plants and trees for natural healing. And she had come back to the city council and proposed it as part of the master plan, what we call the Healing Garden, which the city is, Bhuvneshwar City would work with the Cupertino city once and when it is finalized and put together. So I just want to make sure the new members come to know that we have such a thing in the plan and once, whether it's in Memorial Park or any other park, we want to work with you guys, with you all. So please, just wanted to bring it up in the inbox so that you guys remember it's the Healing Garden and the Sister City wants to work with you guys on that. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mahesh. Next we have Luis Sedadi, followed by Mike Stanek, followed by Donnie Garber. Welcome, Luis.
Hello, thank, hello, thank you very much. I have a terrible allergy, so please forgive my voice, but I feel great. Thank you to the council, the city managers and the attorney and the city staff for all their support for the dolas through the years. The dola community has been working with the city since 2017 to develop dolas, dog-off-leash areas. We're asking the council and staff to keep in mind that the dola at Memorial Park that's in the schematic should have three critical qualities. It needs to be big enough, it needs to be grassed, and it needs to have wide gates in the four enclosed fences, so that the Cupertino Public Works lawn mowers can get through to maintain the grass. One, the dola needs to be larger than Mary Dog Park, which is not heavily used because the area is too small and the dogs feel trapped and are afraid inside the little fenced area. If there's an unsocialized dog, it will frighten the other dogs and they will feel trapped because they literally can't get away. If the enclosed area is bigger than what is at Mary Park, then more dog users will come because the dogs won't feel trapped. And the, number two, the dola field needs to be grass. Other terrain like that at Mary Park, which is like some artificial whatever, leads to dirty dogs and difficulty with the city maintaining the field in a clean and healthy manner. More residents would more readily use the Memorial Park dola if it has grass. And, and number three, the, oh dear. Okay, wide gates so the mowers can get through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mike Stanek, followed by Donnie Garber, followed by Jean Bedore. Welcome, Mike.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a 39-year Cupertino resident and have been participating in softball at Memorial Park since the 90s, first in the evening adult leagues and now in the senior softball during the day. It, it's been a great opportunity to build community, meet friends, and I would hate to see that taken away with the proposed plan. It's, there are few opportunities for seniors to get together in organized sports like that and that has been a great opportunity for us. There's, I know a lot of the community input has been in support of other ideas, but all the parks can't be everything to everyone. We have this already. Let's please preserve this aspect of the park in remodeling the other and bringing in some of the other features. Let's not make it a zero-sum game. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have, we, that was Mike Stanek, I believe. We have Donnie Garber, followed by Jean Bedore. Welcome, Donnie.
Right here. You guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Donnie Garber. My wife and I are Cupertino natives. We grew up here and we never saw the survey. I love Cupertino. I would have taken the survey. We have played at that softball field since the 80s. We started off in COVID during senior softball weekdays. The park is actually pretty empty. I know the Parks and Rec Commission doesn't think the field is utilized. I don't think they take into account the nonofficial use of the field by community members. I've heard talk about dog parks, pickleball courts, basketball courts, walking areas to replace the field. My knowledge of Cupertino, after working for the Cupertino Union School District Facilities Department for many years, that the city maintains and considers schools as open park space during after-school hours, which leads to mini basketball courts, grass areas, tennis courts, playgrounds available for the community. And Deansa College also allows their tennis courts and pickleball courts available for community use when classes are not in session. With McCullin Ranch, Steams Creek County Park, Rancho San Antonio, Fremont, older, there's plenty of opportunity to get out, hike, walk and walk your dog. I was on the board of Cupertino National Little League for many years. I know the Cupertino area very well. I attend most events in the amphitheater and I can attest that the attendance can be good at the amphitheater, but it's only used during the summer months. The softball field is used year-round, weather permitting, and I believe the total attendance of the softball field far surpasses the yearly attendance of the amphitheater. With all the other amenities available in this city, let me remind you, there is only one, one adult softball field serving the Cupertino community. Based on that, I ask the council to highly recommend to keep the softball field as part of our community that we love so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Next we have Jean Bedore, followed by Jennifer Rutherford. It's possible that Rick Atkins also wished to speak on this item. If yes, please line up, otherwise I will call on you under oral communications as indicated. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Way, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedore and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I'm representing many of the seniors in Cupertino. You've probably seen the Mercury News article last week stating that Santa Clara County is projected to have more seniors than youth by 2030, only seven years away. That's true, even more so here in Cupertino, as evidenced by the decline in school population and school closures. Change is hard and our parks need to change. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for all of their hard work in pulling together this conceptual plan. They've done an amazing amount of work in community outreach and have incorporated that feedback into the plan. Secondly, I'd like to highlight the improvements which will benefit our senior population, which does tend to get overlooked in our city programs. The expansion of the senior center courtyard and improving access to the park is badly needed. The current deck is too small and lacks ADA access to the park. The addition of a fitness station and easily accessible garden features are senior-friendly. Many of our seniors have dogs, so a dola is a senior-friendly amenity. Thirdly, I'd like to emphasize the need to add a vehicle lot on Anton Way. In addition to providing space for food trucks, adding loading and unloading space for events would improve safety, as well as provide ADA access to the theater, which is almost nonexistent right now. Overall, I urge you to move ahead with this plan. It's taken much too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next we have Jennifer Rutherford. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jennifer and I'm a San Jose resident, but my boyfriend is actually born and raised in Cupertino, so I'm speaking on his behalf as well as he couldn't be here tonight. I am so opposed to you removing the softball field at Memorial Park for a number of reasons. Everywhere in the strategic plan or the master plan regarding the parks talks about recreational opportunities and social gathering opportunities for all ages and all people. By taking away the park, you're taking away an opportunity for us to do all of those things. There are very limited spaces where adults can go in order to gather and participate in athletics and be outdoors, so that's a huge negative. I hadn't even thought about some of the things that the people have talked about tonight, but I'm even more an advocate for keeping the park based on some of the things I was hearing from the other speakers this evening. It's not cost-effective to remove something that already exists and to build a bunch of other spaces that are kind of redundant. There's so many other opportunities for people to be outdoors and do the walks and play and you've already got those built in. Plus, there's going to be so much added space based on kind of the maps that I was looking at, so there's really no need to take the park away. It also provides a place where we can feel safe while we're playing because of the lights and the fence, so we're not interrupting other people by, sometimes the guys hit the ball over the fence, right? And in any other park, there's no fence. So having that is protection for not only us, but other parkgoers as well. So please do not remove the park.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we will move to Zoom. We have, now we have seven hands raised. Annie Yang, followed by Deepa Mahendrekar, followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Annie. Oh, are you Rick Atkins? Okay, yes.
I can't hear you, so that's why I missed out. My name's Rick Atkins. I am a 42-year resident of Cupertino. I'm here to, of course, make my pitch for maintaining the field. I've been playing, we named ourselves the Geezers, for all of us old folks that are seniors and retired for a whole bunch of years. I've been there since 2013. Cupertino has, and softball has been a big part of my life. I raised my kids here. My daughter played Cupertino Girls Softball. She played at Cupertino High School. We've been utilizing the facilities and it, the things that you want for your kids, the things that you want for people, it's brought, brought all of those together, all of the good. it's brought all of those together, all of the good things. And so now that I'm old, I want a chance to be able to do those same things for myself. This park is, this field is the only place where we can play. You take that away, I have nowhere to go. I can't go back to the fields where we had my daughter play because adults just don't fit. We can still hit farther than a 12-year-old. For me, the social benefits, I've got, made a lot of friends up there since, in the league since 2013. And now I got a bunch of golf buddies. I've got guys that we go out and we hang out. It goes far beyond just having a place to play. It's a place for us, for our generation, for my generation, to have an opportunity to keep going and keep going. So please leave us our field.
That is your time. Thank you, Rick. Next, okay, we will now move to Zoom. We have Annie Yang followed by Deepa Mahendrikar followed by Nori. Welcome, Annie.
Good evening, Mayor Way and council members. My name is Annie Yang and I'm the Chair of the Environmental Action Committee of SCVAS and a Cupertino resident. As you may know, the earth is experiencing a dangerous decline in biodiversity, but we can help. Let's make Memorial Park not only a great recreation and event space for our community, but also an urban biodiversity hotspot. Next slide.
Just one second.
One of the easiest ways to support biodiversity is to support local pollinators such as those here. These are the critters that keep our plants alive and our flowers coming back each season. The caterpillars of butterflies and moths are crucial for baby birds to survive. Next slide. And don't forget about the bees, which are key pollinators of our plants and our food crops. Most people are familiar with the European honeybee, but many people don't realize that we have 1,600 species of native bees in California. Most of them are solitary, live in the ground, or sleep on flowers or stems like the little guy on the right taking a nap. And because they don't need to defend a hive and don't make honey, they rarely sting. They are also very efficient pollinators and can pollinate 200 times more flowers than honeybees. Next slide, please. So how do we support pollinators in an urban environment? Well, plant native California plants that have high habitat value, which means they support more pollinators and more caterpillars and other plants. The next few slides show photos of a Google Office Park in Mountain View. Look how vibrant it is with the milkweed, fuchsia, yarrow, and other flowers. And right behind it is an office building. Can you go back to the previous slide, please? And that milkweed in the middle supports monarch caterpillars and the, all the wildflowers on the right appear year after year without the need to replant because pollinators are doing their job. Next slide. This is another view of the office park. Look at the lush landscaping that's right next to development and people enjoying nature right in the middle of this urban area. Next slide.
And that is your time, Annie.
Thank you.
So we will go to Deepa Mahendrikar followed by Nori followed by San Ar. Welcome, Deepa.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Way and City Council members. I'm here representing the community members at the Memorial Park for Dola, Dogs Off leash Areas. We have participated in the surveys very early on in order to give our feedback and that's how Dogs Off Leash Area was even added to the memorial-specific plan and I'm thrilled to see that. I do want to make a couple of comments about the softball area. We are here practically every day, even today. I'm right now here in the softball area and there is a illegally set up net for volleyball and volleyball game is going on and there's nobody else other than the dogs and the volleyball players. The reason why I point this out is it's a huge area. It takes a lot of maintenance, a lot of water, and it's only used probably less than 20 or 15% of the time. And the other times, we are kind of illegally using it. So yes, we do need the Dola. I'm the one who opted for the options around nature walks and multipurpose areas, which I think is a great idea for the park. I do want to talk about three things that we are going to need, and that is basically grass in the fenced Dola area that is being planned. Absolutely needed. Please don't make it another Mary Avenue dirty, you know, dirt-based park. Nobody will use it. Second, we need the area to be bigger. This is a mixed dog area, small dogs, big dogs, and the moment it actually becomes a fenced area, it becomes a pretty wide attraction. You are going to start seeing more dogs coming in and that just means that we should plan for that and not plan for, you know, oh yeah, it'd be a small space for dogs to come in. And third is amenities. We do want to make sure the entire Memorial Park, 28 acres of Memorial Park, has only two water areas, one right next to the baseball park, which is very, very slow.
Deepa, as your time. Next, our final four speakers will be Nori, San Ar, Jresh, Toby, and Padma Garamela. Welcome, Nori.
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the Gates Design Team for choosing Concept A, community-focused, and added various attributes from other concepts in order to make it most desirable blended design for everyone. I'd like to add some comments to the latest design. Playground. The playground looks too small. It has to be much bigger after choosing two current playgrounds. The current playground are full of the families with children, late afternoon, weekends, holidays, and driving and after events. In addition, children in summer camp at the Queensland Center go to the playground during the break. The new playground has to be inclusive playground for all children with physical and cognitive disability also, so that the minimal family can visit. Second one is pickleball court. Pickleball is getting popular, but the high-pitched loud noise bothers some people. Have you been and stayed there for current pickleball courts at least 30 minutes? The loud noise bothers children who are sensitive to the sound, especially some autism children. The tennis noise is 40 dB, but the pickleball is almost double that, 70 dB, which is considered disturbing level. Please move pickleball court away from playground and picnic area and locate it near Stevens Creek and Anton so that the noise is no longer issue. And extend basketball court, move the basketball court where the pickleball design was there and extend the playground there so make space much bigger. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Nori. Next we have San Ar followed by Jresh, Toby followed by Padma Garamela. Welcome, San. Sorry, now you're unmuted.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Way. I'm actually offering this public comment from the Monta Vista Park where over 30 people are playing softball right now. So if you are hearing background noise, that is the glorious sound of a softball bat striking the ball. And I hope you'll come out to our city parks and enjoy the vibrant game of softball that plays out every evening. I want to bring to your attention the survey in the supporting materials in your packet. Please take a look at the survey. There is no option in the survey for a fenced Dola. So when you look at the bar charts, please look at the key for the color codes and show me where the survey says a fenced Dola. You're replacing the softball field with amenities, one of which is a fenced Dola, and you're hearing requests for a large Dola with grass. And I want to remind you that we are in the middle of a drought. The city parks have been removing grass and recommending to residents to take lawns off and replace with drought-free vegetation. And you have a survey that had no Dola on it. And if you search for dogs, the only dogs you find is in the comments. I also want to remind you that in the budget survey we did, which I sent you the comments on, all of the comments that were sent in by residents because the survey didn't include the options we wanted were ignored. And so we cannot have these outcomes from surveys be selective where one set of comments from anecdotal feedback is discarded and another set of comments are included. The best decision you can make today is to scrap all plans that are being offered to you by the consultants and keep Memorial Park as it is. The Memorial Park softball fields have been around. It's a way of life and replacing it is an assault on sports and an assault on girl sports. I ask that you please make no change. Our city finances cannot afford it.
Thank you, San. Next we have Jresh, Toby followed by Padma Garamela. And there were two additional speakers that had their hands raised and then lowered them. Lisa Warren and Jennifer Sharon are back on the list. So welcome, Jresh. You'll need to unmute yourself, Jresh. Okay, so I'll move on and I will call you after this speaker. Padma Garamela, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. My name is Padma. I am a dog owner here to see the Dolas. The previous caller said grass, which is, you know, which requires a lot of water, and I completely agree. What we should do is we should let it go to Clover and let the dogs play there. That would be environmentally friendly and it will give us space for all our pet friends to have a productive fun time together so that they do not become nuisanceous after. So their mental health is just as important and they give us the support that we need. And, you know, we do not consider them separate from our children. Last year, around October, Vice Mayor Chila Mohan and Jay Aras, the current council member, they were here and they came to hear our plans and they seemed very, they wanted to help us and I hope that happens. And I will second what Deepa said before about having a water fountain for dogs and having a large enough grassy area. It doesn't have to be grass. It could be Clover. Grassy area for the dogs to play and run in so that they are happy and because of that, the people who have the dogs will stay happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Padma. Okay, I'm going to call on Gresh, Toby again. Welcome, Jresh. Please unmute yourself. Okay, it looks like you're having some audio issues. I'll move on to Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
I was at most of the Parks and Rec meetings and I went to a few of the different pop-ups for input. I didn't see a great call for removing the softball field. In fact, I saw the opposite. It is irreplaceable and actually it's a multipurpose space. Dogs would be happier in a large fenced area with grass and in a small fenced area that's proposed. Softball is senior-friendly. Someone gave us lists of all these senior-friendly aspects, but softball is obviously senior-friendly. Thank you to everyone there tonight who spoke. During community input, I observed the support for softball was there and it's obviously supported in this meeting is my point. So I don't know why it got such low ratings. Memorial Park is referred to as the city's crown jewel. The softball field is a diamond. It's a jewel. It's that that helps create the jewel in the center of our city and it's softball supports, as people have mentioned, everyone, including girls and women and seniors and families of all ages and abilities in sport. There is, I supported the softball field in everything I was at and I heard it a lot. So I'm really confused by this interpretation of maybe one piece of gathering, but I know this is a great company and that hopefully that did not happen. But please reconsider leaving the softball field where it is and letting people who already enjoy it, enjoy it and getting more people to join in. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next we have Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Way and City Council members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, even though I am on the Parks and Rec Commission. And I'd like to note that we spent a long time reviewing the concepts and proposed plans over several meetings. First, I'd like to say thank you to the staff and project consultants for putting together a fine plan. It appears they have taken both the input of the residents and the current and future utilization of park amenities thoughtfully. We need to look forward to how this park will be used for the next 50 years and this proposal is a good start to that goal. One thing I do see that's missing are bike parking locations. These should be considered in the initial design and not as an afterthought. If we are to meet our climate goals to increase active transportation, we need to have them thoughtfully placed, just like car parking is. I'd also like to note that a bike traffic garden should be part of the final design. It appears that instead of a bike traffic garden, a tricycle track for younger kids was added in the proposal. This looks like just a path. The bike traffic garden was a popular option in Concept A, the only place where it was available to vote on, more popular than other items such as the bocce ball court or additional parking that did make it into the final design. It was also a top choice for those who came to the in-person open house at the senior center. The traffic garden's a way to encourage and teach our children safe ways to ride bikes. It's not available in any other park, unlike, I've been hearing about the softball field. There's softball fields at all of our, a lot of our schools as well as in other parks locally. This is not available anywhere in Cupertino or in surrounding cities. It'll be used by safe routes for classes and by kids every day. Lastly, as a Parks and Rec Commissioner, I ask you to consider the input of our commission tonight carefully. And that's all found in the attachment senior packet. Thank you for considering my input tonight and your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I will try one more time for Jresh, Toby. I will allow you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Okay, so Mayor, that looks like that was the final commenter.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank everyone who are here and also everyone who spoke because we value your input and thank you for your time to participate with our city meetings. So welcome to Cupertino. And I'd like to bring this back, close the public comment period and bring this back to council for discussion. So today I think our goal is to come up with a recommended plan for the staff to work on a schematic plan. So we're open to, for council input. Do I have council members who would like to put input first? Because we have been briefed by our staff on the plan. So today we're here, you know, we're here to really get a consensus of the council's decision of how do we go move forward. Anyone would like to come first? Where's Mayor Mohan? You're on. Five minutes.
Yes, as, thank you, Mayor Way. As Mayor Way mentioned, we did have a one-on-one with staff earlier in the week to go with the details of the schematic design. And that was extremely helpful, so thank you to staff. I had a couple of questions and here's what I wanted to say. There are many amenities included in the park design and I'm sure, I know a lot of thought has gone into it. And if you strictly sort of base it on the survey results, the need for the softball park is among the sort of lower needs. Now, some of you have questioned the way the survey was done. Some of you have said that you didn't know there was a survey being conducted. But regardless, if we just go by the facts as laid out in the survey that was presented, the softball team is not among the highest, higher priorities. Having said that, and having listened to several of you this afternoon, I wanted to ask maybe the staff or the consultants, what options do we have in terms of amenities if we stayed with the softball park in Memorial Field? And I just wanted to preface that by saying your reports have also said that there are three softball parks in the vicinity. One in, at the Kennedy Middle School and two at the Monta Vista Rec Center. So I had a two-part question. One, if the softball park One, what if the softball park stayed, what would we have to do without? And two, what is the difference in terms of quality or convenience between the softball park at the Memorial Park versus the softball parks at the other two locations?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I can answer some of those questions. With respect to keeping the softball field within the existing plan, we would have, we would most likely lose some of the other elements that are currently in there. These elements were created and included in the plan based on a lot of the surveys and community input that we had received during the outreach process. But some of the elements that we have in here would probably have to be shifted or just lost. Anywhere from two to four of the existing elements that are in the plan may be lost. With respect to existing softball fields, you're correct. There's a softball field at Kennedy Middle School and two at the Monta Vista Rec Center. The two at the Monta Vista Rec Center are sized adequately for fast pitch softball. They are not sized for adult slow pitch softball. And the field at Kennedy, there is adequate space for slow pitch adult softball. There is no home run fence. It's just an open field beyond that. I think the one thing that the softball field at Memorial Park has above and beyond the other three fields is lighting, which allows for nighttime play. And my understanding is a lot of the teams that use the field are typically adults who are doing games after work. I know some of the field is booked on the weekends, but yeah, that is the one thing that Memorial Park has that the other three do not.
Thank you. So do I have another hint? If not, I, I will follow up with a question, follow up with Vice Mayor's question. That is with these, at first I have to reveal that I did visit the softball game on Thursday morning and it, I, I see that you really guys really enjoyed it and I will go see it on Friday too. And so just to get a feeling of it. So my question for staff is, at the softball field right now, is it being, can it be multi-used for like a dola, like what we have in Monta Vista Park dola or can it, is it possible to multi-use it instead of just for softball?
I think right now it's unofficially being used as a dola, as was mentioned by some of the existing residents. I think there's the potential for that to happen, to utilize that space as a dola. But again, right now it's unofficially being used as one.
Thank you. That's my current question. And Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Chow.
All right, thank you. So I'm kind of curious if we couldn't see what fencing in the remaining open area of the softball field for a, for a test to see if that works as a, as a dola and see after a few months how that worked out, if that wouldn't be a worthwhile endeavor for us with regards to that.
Is that a question or just a comment?
It's really both. With regards to staff, how much effort would that take to put in about 30 feet of fencing, wide enough area for the mower since that was mentioned? And, and I did go out on Friday evening and spoke to some of the impromptu dola people and watched the game. And as a kid, I did play softball as well. I should probably mention that.
Sir, to Mayor, if I may, point of clarification for Councilmember Moore's suggestion, I guess I want to emphasize that this is a conceptual design that staff is bringing to council. I guess we, whether or not we're getting feedback from council if softball field should stay and make a necessary adjustment to other design and will come back and ask for that feedback. In terms of implementation, they are simultaneously occurring at the Memorial Park right now.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
So perhaps this is another question, that we could continue this item after seeing the results of a six-month trial, seeing if that worked with the dola and the softball field. And then also getting some more information about the pre-pandemic use, what the situation is with regards to any difficulties people have making reservations, what support we can be providing with regards to leagues in the area. I know my kids played soccer. I know how difficult it is to get a field at 5:30 in the wintertime. It's the summer solstice today, but it is, it's dark at 5:15 and we were scrambling. We'd be trying to play on a baseball field because it had lights out in Sunnyvale and that was all that was available. And we tried to squeeze maybe two teams out there. It is, it's, they're really a premium. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Chow, followed by Councilmember Frun.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank staff for an extensive outreach and a very thoughtful plan. You really tried to pack in a lot of stuff in the proposed plan. But we don't have just one park. We have many parks. Many of these nice features, even if they don't get implemented in Memorial Park, they could be implemented in other parks of the city. So I think when we think about what the plan should be, we shouldn't be just focusing on Memorial Park. And so I would like to know, do I have any utilization data before the pandemic or before 2022?
I believe we do.
We do, yeah. And so if that can be made available.
We do have, through the mayor, I'm sorry. We do have data through the registration. So this is only for those people who have made a reservation of the field.
Okay, but those who informally play won't be available.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Then the, so my understanding, yeah, thank you. It's good to know that so many people do play softball and you, that most of people who probably didn't know and, and it's really good to know that this is one, the one senior, one organized sport that many seniors play. That's really good to know. And I understand this is the only one with light and a very good area for seating. It's true, it's very costly if we have to create something brand new and. So yeah, I also would like to see maybe a pilot for dola to, at the softball field because I think the dola people also requested they would like to see grass rather than the current plan has a very small area that's mostly dirt. I understand some dogs really prefer a grass area. So if we, if that could work, we can find different ways to utilize softball field like frisbee and all these other, I think some people mentioned, yeah, so may, but I under, and I also hope that we can put in language to include pollinating plants so that we attract butterflies and bees and then small water fountain, small fountain for birds so that we also, because after we remove the pond, the birds don't have a place for drinking. So if we can have a couple of small water fountain and then some amenities for the dogs, that would be great. And I am a little concerned that the play area looks smaller, maybe it's not, but right now it seems we have one playground for smaller kids and one playground for the bigger kids. I, I don't know whether the new one would have, be able to serve kids of different ages. But I love a lot of the concept that's in the proposed plan, the extension near the senior center. And but it's true that city is facing very tight budget now. So I hope that staff maybe can come back with a more economical version of the plan. This has been done before. Usually the first round, people propose a lot of idea and it's very costly. And then usually we would come back with a more realistic economical plan. That has happened for the Stevens Creek Corridor before. It had happened with the city hall plan before. So I hope that we have a better plan next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Frun.
So I'll start off with my questions before I move into comments. Can you elaborate on what a tricycle track is as compared to this bicycle garden?
I'm going to hand that one over to Gates and Associates to respond to.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you very much. A bike traffic garden is a dedicated space for kids specifically to learn how to ride a bike, learn the traffic rules that apply to their daily lives. This is incorporation of additional signage, wayfinding elements, striping, potentially a dedicated space. A tricycle track is kind of a step below that where we see a lot of kindergarten areas, elementary school areas incorporate a track into the playground area where it's kind of circumnavigating throughout the play area itself, but is not as intensive use dedicated for bikes.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. To staff as well, you know, I know it's slightly out of your jurisdiction, but in your contemplation of the availability of other softball facilities, did you consider at all the existence of Calabazas Park and John Mize in San Jose?
When it came to looking at existing softball fields, we just looked at the softball fields within Cupertino. I am aware of a number of other fields in and around, or around Cupertino, including Santa Clara has, has field complexes. But yeah, within Cupertino, we have just the four.
And then there was a comment with respect to the potential for clover in, in the dola. Do you think that that would be viable considering how much weaker it is underfoot?
That would be a detail we'd look at when we got to that point of designing that project and implementing it. We've not looked that far into the details yet.
Okay, is that something we could give you some direction on today to at least examine?
Yeah, we would look at what type of surface that would be most appropriate for, for a dog park at that point.
Okay. And then with respect to parking, it strikes me that there's an awful lot of parking in this plan and I'm not really sure that as much of it is necessary if it means that we would have to sacrifice some other amenity, especially if there is ultimately broad demand to keep the softball field. The parking in particular that is at the northwestern end of the park, how much of that do you think we would need to keep given that we are adding more on Anton in this plan?
Thank you, Councilmember Frun. The existing parking, we did an analysis and it is sufficient for the day-to-day use. Of course, for the events, there's overflow at Deanza. We were asked to keep the parking that exists and we were adding just a little bit for the loading and the event space support. If you're asking us to consider removing parking, that would be part of your direction. I guess we haven't gotten into that.
Okay, because I think that everyone would probably thank us for keeping amenities over parking. I'd also like to draw staff's attention to the suggestions made by the Audubon Society. I'd really like to incorporate all of them. I think that these are useful things to do to help increase biodiversity, reduce our usage of water and create an overall better space. In particular, you know, I just wanted to draw attention to the very last point that's here about developing a maintenance best practice plan for it. When it comes to native plantings, they're not necessarily as well-treated as a, you know, an English tea garden. So it would be nice to see that we are adopting a maintenance plan that reflects the types of plants that are there.
Thank you, Councilmember Frun. So I'm going to follow up with that. Just today's task is to, for the council to provide the staff with what we would like to be included in the schematic plan. So the details such as healing gardens and, you know, bird feeders and what plants to plant, bike racks across parks, I heard a lot of suggestions, can be, can come up after we have the schematic plan, right? So today you want, what us to come as, what do we want? Do we want to keep the softball field? Do we want to have some playgrounds? Is that what we're looking for today?
Yeah, so I think today basically we're presenting kind of a preferred concept that was based on a lot of public outreach and input. We've taken kind of various aspects of that public input and kind of created this preferred concept. And we're looking for council input on this preferred concept so that we can then take your input and move on to the next stage, which is kind of a more schematic design. So basically what you see, are we in the right direction or are we potentially missing something like maybe a softball field and you want us to put that in, you know, provide us that direction and we'll look at how that may be able to be implemented and working into a schematic design that will be coming back to council later on.
Thank you. And I also like to ask staff for the timeline. We are in the schematic design, how long would that take? And also, I don't think we have funding yet. So what is a realistic outlook for our Memorial Park timeline for really start to build?
A great question, Mayor Wei. I'll take that in direct. Mostly you can add in if I miss anything. So we're coming to council today at step three of the five steps identified for the specific plan for the Memorial Park. First step is when council gave direction to go ahead and do the research, then to do community outreach. Now we're at the conceptual design. Then we'll follow up by schematic design and then to conclude that with the proper environmental clearance for the entire project. At this point, council has only allocated sufficient funding and the consultant has only outlined the schedule to get us to the specific planned area. We don't have any funding identified for the actual construction, leave alone the construction schedule itself. I would anticipate the team to come back with the schematic design either at the end of this year, if not early next year. Environmental clearance may take anywhere from six months to nine months depending on the final scope and the involvement. And we could ask council for appropriate allocating, allocation of funding during next fiscal year's budget preparation. So I mean, everything goes well. We could be looking at potentially two years from today for any sort of real groundbreaking or construction.
Thank you, City Pam, the manager would, this is give us a good concept of our timeline. So I have like two, a couple of minutes left. So what like, what, you know, we're all going to put some input. So personally, I really feel like that there is a chance we can, if we can save the softball field with the lighting, I think it would be a good amenity. But what would go, I see what would go. And then another concept I have is I like Councilmember Frun's suggestion. If we don't need that parking, we can put pickleball back because of that. I think that would be a good direction that I would prefer because event parking can also still use the Anton Road, close it, even though we don't have parking because I think that's what is doing very well. As for dola, I really feel that dola, we have actually three lawns, three event lawns. Do we, we have lawns that's available for dola tryout, just like any park too. So it's flexible, right?
Are you referring to Memorial Park only or?
Memorial Park, only Memorial Park only.
Is it three, I'm looking at my, my director, Senator, are we looking at two lawns or three lawns for dola?
So we have two lawns in addition to the softball park that could be a dola, you know, area. So is that a possible way we can look at it?
We can verify and come back to you.
Okay, thank you. So my time is up. So my fellow councilmembers, you have 30 seconds and so.
My understanding is dola people like softball field because it's fenced. The lawns are not. And I think if we talk about utilization, the loading and unloading area that likely would be used ahead of days when we have festivals in a year. So is that necessary or the temporary arrangement we have now works? And I would like clarification. Are we adding parking? I thought we didn't add really parking spaces. And without parking, people can get to the park. Most Cupertino, it has a lack of public transportation. So most people do have to drive to the park to utilize them.
Thank you.
Especially seniors. Can I get answers to my questions?
Sure.
I guess the one question I caught was. I guess the one question I caught was that, are you, you asked if we are adding parking, and the, this conceptual plan does show an additional parking space off of Anton Way near Stevens Creek. There's a small lot there.
So can you give, give me numbers? How many we have and how many we are adding?
Again, this is just conceptual. We don't have exact numbers, but looking at roughly the area we see here, I'm guessing there's an addition of somewhere around twenty spaces.
Only along the Anton Way?
Only along Anton Way.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Okay. I wanted to clarify something. Was the, was the suggestion that parking lot two next to Anton, that that could potentially be pickleball from Councilmember Frum? I wasn't sure.
I mean, I'd be happy to allow staff the flexibility to decide what they want to do. My, my initial impression was just there's this rather strange configuration, especially with a loop at the end, at the northern end of the parking lot, and it seems like that's an odd utilization of space, and maybe now would be a good time to change it.
That one. Okay, thank you. So it, that could potentially be modified and made smaller, but it does make a pretty useful turnaround for, for drivers through there. I had thought that perhaps parking lot two, if it was not needed, could become a pickleball. I, I do understand that there is a noise issue with pickleball, so I kind of like the idea of it being over by Anton and Stevens Creek Boulevard. I really like the senior amenities that are suggested here, the improved Quinlan Courtyard, and I'm hoping that that can be an event venue location, so that can be thought about in the future with a covered area that doesn't have the holes in it like we have right now where the rain comes through, so that there can be some outdoor celebration space and some, maybe some potential revenue from renting that. I like the passive garden, native pollinator space, walking area. I really, I think that that's awesome. And we're keeping the existing Veterans Memorial. We want to make sure that there's enough seating for those celebrations to continue. And I do want to see the softball community to continue to be able to play and work there, work on your membership and the league participation with the staff if that's possible. And I, and as I said earlier, I want to see if there's a way that DOLA can use the softball field in closing that remaining thirty feet or so area with a wide enough fence. There, there is clover there right now. I grew up in Vermont, we had clover. It just, it's invasive. It's gonna, you're gonna end up with it. It's hard to get rid of. And I, I think it's really important to see how, if we can agree to have this combination, trying that field, the DOLA softball field, if we can see if that works before we make a decision. If it doesn't work, then we need to break out the DOLA and put it in another location. But if we can actually make that co-use happen, it would, it would be probably a larger space than the DOLA field would be ultimately. It looked smaller in the plans if they were to get the whole field. So I think that's pretty interesting. And then the, the lights, as we mentioned, are, are really critical to hold on to. Okay.
Thank you.
And I, and I would like to hear a little bit about John Mize, because as I said, my kids are playing soccer. When that turf field became the fake turf, they made a deal with Archbishop Midey to be able to have it, but it's a multi-use turf field. And I know the soccer leagues from all over have been, you know, really fighting to, to get that particular space. It's, it's quite a challenge. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Council Vice Mayor Mohan?
Thank you. My question was, since we are directing staff to come back with probably some refinement of the plan that we have now, are there timelines that this could affect?
Through the mayor, Vice Mayor, so what we're hoping to receive is council's feedback on the conceptual design. So when we return with the schematic design, we have your feedback incorporated into the schematic design. So if council are able to give us firm feedback on the conceptual, there will no, there will not be any delay on the schedule.
And when, when was the tentative plan to bring the next iteration of the schematic?
Currently, we're looking at end of, either December, end of a year, if not first meeting in January.
Okay, so anything we decide today will not, or likely will not delay that, those timelines?
Any, any, any confirmation on the conceptual will not delay. However, if council would like to see a refinement of the conceptual design to be brought back, that would push back the schedule by maybe three to six months or so.
Okay, when you say refinement, do you mean changes?
Correct.
So any change we propose will delay it?
For instance, through the mayor, if council's direction today is to incorporate softball field back to the conceptual design and have staff bring the conceptual design back for council for another round of review, that will be essentially a additional time added to the overall timeline. However, alternatively, if we get confirmation feedback from council to add the softball field into the schematic design, we will bring back a schematic design that includes a softball field, and that will not have any delay to the schedule.
But that's a decision that has to be made today.
That is correct.
Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Mohan. So Councilmember Frum, you have one more minute for this round of discussion. Would you like to use that up?
Sure, yeah. I'd just say that, you know, if it comes down to other amenities, one of the spaces that seems like it probably would not garner as much use as everything else is the event lawn that is right next to the gazebo. And I get the impression that folks would probably really like the full-sized basketball court. You know, we, we just opened one in, in Wilson Park, and it is spectacularly used. There were people climbing over the fences to get into it before we opened it. We just don't have pickleball courts elsewhere in the, in the city. It would be, I think we'd be doing ourselves a disservice if we don't have them. With respect, though, to the, the tricycle track, I'm not really getting the impression that there was a demand for this. I think the demand was for a bicycle traffic garden. And so I'd really like to see a, a version that incorporates that somehow in this space. Those are my, my general comments on what we've got left here.
So before I open up for another round of discussion, if we need it, I would like to have a motion to sort of incorporate what we have right now, and then we can discuss the motion and refine it and give the staff a, a good direction. So I am gonna attempt to make a very simple motion, and my fellow councilmembers can add friendly amendment, and so we can wrap this up. We have another, actually, we'd like to end by six forty-five. We're not going to, hopefully we'll end by seven, so we can give the staff clear directions. So my motion would be to, to come back with a schematic design that keep the softball field, but find places to add pickleball to it. That would be my very simple motion for staffs. And I'm looking for a second, then I know we're gonna probably get some friendly amendments. May I have a second, please? Councilmember Chow seconds, and would like to make comments?
I'll second it, but I have a friendly amendment, yeah. I think we are not really on a schedule to meet any deadline. We just installed one point six million, we just spent one point six million dollars to put in the lawn. So I would suggest that we bring back another conceptual design so that we can see, rather than having a schematic.
Thank you, friendly amendment.
So can, so yeah, so my friendly amendment is to bring back conceptual design so we can see where things are, that include the softball field and find new location for keep pickleball and basketball field, maybe the extra parking and the loading dock in the, near the Anton Avenue could be optional. And then include the native plants and pollinator garden, the, the comments from Audubon Society for nature walk.
Thank you. I have a friendly amendment.
Do you accept?
Except, I have a question for, for staff. For all the things we want to add back and still keep the softball, is it really realistic to have the basketball, pickleball, and whatever? That's being mentioned, you mentioned the friendly amendment.
As, as mentioned during the presentation, there would be a few of our existing amenities that would probably have to drop off. There, there was mention of potentially losing one of the event lawns. We could look into that. And right now, again, we're just taking your inputs, and we'll do what we can to maximize as, as much as, as you guys want to see back into it. But, you know, we're not gonna be able to keep everything. And so we're kind of looking for what are your most preferred items to have in there. And if you have any suggestions about what maybe could be dropped off, that may be helpful as well.
Okay, so I would accept that friendly amendment for discussion purpose. So now we're coming to discuss with the motion with the friendly amendment. So I have Councilmember Frum's light on first, and then Councilmember Moore. So Councilmember Frum, you go first, and followed by Councilmember Moore. And let's keep it at three minutes.
Yeah, this is just really for the sake of housekeeping as we go forward. I think since I anticipate that we might be making changes to this motion here and there, that perhaps if we can impose upon the clerk to type it out so we've got it on the screen and we can follow along, it might make our lives a little easier.
Councilmember Chow, do you have it?
If I have a, maybe I could provide a suggestion. If, if there are maybe two or three items that you want to recommend that we look at trying to include, maybe just rattle off two or three items so that we can try and get that, get that in there. If not, this could get very convoluted, and we're back at square one a year and a half ago. We're just trying to, we've got a design. Are we generally in the right direction? We've taken a lot of community input on this. We think we're not far off. We didn't hear a whole lot about a need for a softball field until today. And so if, if there is direction to maybe add that in there, we'll go back, look at this plan, try and, and maybe make some adjustments to do that in there. But like, without getting into, like, I want to have fifty items added, maybe just like, we think you're in the right direction, but maybe add a softball field, something like that, to keep it simple.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I was gonna say, if we do wind up with a number of things, maybe prioritizing them would be helpful in light of the direction we just got.
Councilmember Moore?
Sure. This might help with retaining the basketball in the pickleball fields. If you consider the passive garden walk, item eleven, it's a really large area. And there are, when I think about the pollinator plantings, I kind of think of that as more of that, that should be, and drought tolerant native plants, that should be kind of a, a way of life for us with our landscaping moving forward, going drought tolerant. And I see, there are a lot of green areas which don't have any labels on them, some along Alva's Drive between the parking in Quinlan, against Stelling, at Long Stevens Creek Boulevard, and even on the entrance into the senior center parking off of Mary. There's a lot of green space that I think could be used. And then when people drive by, they see that these plants can be brought into their landscapes as well, and that it can be done in a way that doesn't end up looking really sloppy. Because it can be challenging, especially if you really water these drought tolerant plants. They'll, you'll, they'll say it's a one-foot plant, you'll end up with a five-foot plant if you actually irrigate it. So if there are some other places where those could go in free up Area 11, that might be helpful for your design.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mohan?
I do wanted to keep it very. I wanted to keep it very simple as well. I would, I would, I would like to have you look at the softball field request and see if we can do something with it. Relocate the pickleball field if, if you can. And I wanted to make sure we don't eliminate completely the parking on Anton Way. I, I'm okay with reducing it because I think it provides access for loading, unloading, as well as creating access for the handicapped. So I did not want to eliminate parking, but reduce it. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I think, can we have a two, three-minute recess? Have the clerk get the, whatever items we mentioned, and we prioritize it?
Mayor Way, can we have a fifteen-minute recess?
Yes, okay, fifteen-minute recess, so we prioritize it.
One more, Mayor, if possible. So one more thing I mentioned earlier, I think Councilmember Moore also mentioned, is a possible pilot of DOLA in the softball field. I understand the current area of DOLA is too small and no grass.
Point of clarification, that, that is the current implementation, so it would not affect a future schematic design.
Okay, so that doesn't need to be included? Yeah, okay.
And, and may I suggest that we not try and put all of this in a motion? We're hearing it. I guess maybe the motion is kind of what we have here today with look at the various options being provided and consider modifications to the conceptual plan. Because if we start getting into motions for all these things, we will be here until twelve midnight.
Okay, so we do need to listen, give a prioritize list to you?
Yeah, and you guys have been giving us input. We're taking it all down, and we're gonna look and see what we can do to accommodate everything that was kind of indicated to us.
Do, do you mean that it's enough? You got enough information? Because there are, there are a lot of things mentioned, and I am afraid you cannot incorporate everything in it. And to, that's just I'm making my comment, right? Not just to dismantle everything and start over, it's not my intention. I think we need to give you very clear instruction of what comes first. If everybody agrees softball field stays, next one, we want to put some pickleball in it, and third, maybe preserve parking or not. We will have different opinions on that. Whether we want to get rid of the garden, that's a different opinion. So I, I think it'll be very hard for you to come back with another conceptual and get a same discussion over and over again, if we don't give you a prioritized list.
Understood. Like I said, we're taking this input and, you know, as, as long, and again, we've provided a plan that we feel is generally consistent with resident input. And we're going to, if there is some consensus to look at a softball field, we're gonna look and see how that impacts this plan, see what we can do to shift some things around. We do think there's a little bit of wiggle room. There was discussion about potentially, you know, reducing the size of one of the event spaces, reducing some of the parking. We do, you know, we, we can, we've got professionals, this is what they do. We can probably do some shifting.
Directly mostly, they do, council does have a motion on the table. So let me repeat the motion to council. The motion is to keep the soft, support the staff design, but also to incorporate the softball field back and potentially move the pickleball elsewhere. That was Mayor Way's original motion, and second by Councilmember Chow with the friendly amendment to potentially move the pickleball basketball court, the parking lot and the loading area to a new location. So that was Councilmember Chow's friendly amendment. So that is the motion before you two weigh in on right now.
That's right, okay. So, so do we need a recess, or do we want?
I, I actually don't need a recess. You can just take a vote on that motion. You do have a motion on the table.
Okay.
Pardon?
Yeah, I also detected a little bit more on there. On the motion. I also had include native plants and community garden for a nature walk as presented by the Audubon Society.
So, to me, that's more implementation than, than a, but it is in your friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that's, I'm okay with that if that has to be. Councilmember Moore?
Quick question.
One more round of, one minute discussion, we're gonna vote on it.
Sure. It's more of a question. So are you, are we interested in, in just retaining the separated DOLA area, or are you interested in seeing if we can do the pilot and have the DOLA dual use of the softball field area, which would be bigger space for the DOLA?
So I would just say, I mean, if this is direction as to the design of, of the, the final design of the park, that is something that council can consider today. I don't think a pilot program would be agendized, although that is something that staff could, and the city manager could consider.
考虑到the timeline, we're not gonna touch the, the, the memorial park for a couple years. I think if we want to talk about implementing a pilot program, we'll always do it, right?
Okay.
So we have a motion on the table, so shall we?
I have a friendly amendment. So, so just want to confirm, so this will come back as another conceptual design that we can look at again, right? It's not going to be a schematic detailed design?
Through the mayor, I did not hear that, including in the friendly amendment.
That was in my friendly amendment.
That's council's discretion. Just wanted to put it as a cautionary note that it will include substantial amount of work on the consultant part, and we're ballparking anywhere between hundred thousand to a hundred fifty thousand dollars additional budget allocation for the redesign.
Okay, thank you. So.
I think it's better that we see a conceptual design before we go into details. That would probably save time and money.
Just to clarify, your friendly motion is changing into a conceptual design instead of a schematic design, right?
Because so many things are still in the air.
That is your friendly amendment, okay.
And, and not, no, another friendly amendment is when it comes back, I'd like to see an economical option where most of the existing features are, where, are in its original location if possible. are where, are in its original location if possible. It's an option to consider, so we, um, I'd like to see a potential option that we add some features, but make minimal change to existing park features so that we reduce cost of implementation.
Uh, I am not accepting that because we have a conceptual design and we're gonna go to schematic design. And so that's not going to be particularly, uh, doable. So, um, any feedback again before we vote? Councilmember Fruen? No? Lights? Oh, Council, uh, Vice Mayor Mohan?
I, I'm sorry, Mayor, I just, um, wanted to confirm. So Chow's friendly amendment actually was to bring back another conceptual design and you accepted it. So are we including that?
I think that's, that was in her, uh, motion, right?
Do we just, I, I think it would be helpful now to confirm that both the maker of the motion and, and the councilmember who seconded agree that that's, that's part of the motion.
I was gonna make a very brief, um, comment that I would not want to have another conceptual design. I think we give staff enough clarity to bring back a schematic design that would be, um, that, I would be my preference.
So, so I, 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 I think procedurally, I, I would, I would treat that as, as the maker amending the motion to remove that element of, of, of the, of the friendly amendment. And so, uh, Councilmember Chow, do you agree to that amendment?
Uh, okay.
All righty, so now we're clear about what we're voting for? Uh, one more, very brief round of comments, Councilmember?
What is the question now?
Okay, can we repeat the motion, please? Thank you.
So I have, uh, I can share?
Oh, what, you wanted me to read it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, let me clear that. So the motion was to revise this schematic design to keep the softball field, but find places to add pickleball to it. Chow's friendly amendment, um, included bring back another, uh, now it's, it's schematic design. Um, another schematic that includes the softball field and a new location for pickleball and basketball fields with optional extra parking for loading on Anton Avenue. And I don't know if we're including the include native plants and community garden for a nature walk as presented by the Audubon Society, or is that a detail that staff will work out?
Uh, my understanding is that, that, that was part of the motion that was, that was, the friendly amendment that was made by Councilmember Chow and accepted by, uh, Mayor Way.
That's what I recorded also, okay.
And I'm okay with it.
Um, so this is what I've written here. And, but I just realized that I added this part from Councilmember Moore's idea, which is that we might reduce the, the space for?
That wasn't on your original friendly amendment?
Yeah, it wasn't in my original, so that's, do you accept that? So that we might make more space for other areas.
I, I think we're getting it too complicated right now.
Then I will.
Through the mayor, um, if I may, um, there is some nuances between councilmembers, a screenshot versus what Kirsten just mentioned. Kirsten, if you don't mind, I'll just repeat the motion one more time?
Sure, um, the motion was to, Way moved to revise the schematic design to keep the softball field, but find places to add pickleball to it. Chow seconded with a friendly amendment to bring back another conceptual design that includes the softball field and a new location for pickleball and basketball fields with optional extra parking for loading on Anton Avenue. And, and to include native plants and, uh, community garden for a nature walk as presented by the Audubon Society. Um, Way accepted Chow's friendly amendment and then Way moved to remove the preference of, um, to bring back the conceptual design and instead bring back a schematic.
Okay, I think that's covers.
Just a little clarification, when I said optional loading and loading, I mean, that could be removed, not that I want that to be included.
That's, yes, yes, I, I word that better.
Yeah, because, uh, there, those are, it would be needed only for some time. So maybe the parking lot could be parking lot for daily use and then when we have events, could become a loading area. Then it's double use, yeah.
We got it, okay. Councilmember Fruen, you got a comment?
So to Director Mosley, do you feel that this motion is sufficiently elastic and flexible for you to be able to incorporate all the feedback we gave you today? Or is it too restrictive?
Um, I, I think with respect to the motion, um, uh, we've got some direction here that I believe we can handle. And we've received a lot of other input, uh, for some flexibility there. So yeah, I think we can handle this.
Okay, so for example, the feedback to, with respect to an actual bicycle traffic garden as opposed to a tricycle track is still something for you to consider. You don't necessarily need it in the motion in order to be able to continue to look at it?
That's correct, we can continue to, we're gonna be looking at all of the input and seeing what's possible. But the motion's very, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna be overly directive and I don't want us to, to bog this down too much.
Um, so one question I have for, um, Director Mos- Mosley is, is it really practical to save the softball field and add pickleball and basketball to it?
Are you asking if it's possible to do that? Um, I'm sure there are ways for us to?
But without changing the whole, a lot of things, I, uh, I almost intend to prioritize, uh, pickleball versus basketball.
Uh, Mayor Way, if I may, um, so why don't we work with the consultant? And we'll bring back a schematic design for council to consider.
Sounds good, all right, thank you. Now we have a motion on the table. I think everybody's very clear, so shall we vote on it?
I have to make a comment, I think the only one, the councilmember mentioned the bike, um, pass. I have to make a comment that I'd spoken to at least two seniors who were run down by bicyclists in Memorial Park and they have to be rushed to, uh, emergency room. So if we allow bike tracks in Memorial Park, we need to serious consider it. So that have to be brought to the council before, and that's considered, and thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and that's, yes, please, yes.
Vice Mayor, microphone.
In the discussion about parking on Anton Way, I wanted to make sure it's not just a loading, uh, unloading or reloading zone, but it's just also for handicapped access. So, um, if that could be figured into the mix, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we gave pretty good, um, lots of thoughts to the consultants. So let's vote on the motion, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we're gonna take, uh, how many minutes recess do we need? Ten minutes, five minutes? What's the council's preference? Five minutes recess, please.